All right, it is five thirty-one. I'm gonna call the budget workshops ordered. The first item of business is to be part of the meetings. Marie, would you like? All members of the board of selectmen are here and present. We have a number of presentations tonight to kick off our budget workshop process. We also have a couple of members, I think maybe just one member of the Board of Finance for this. Good evening, Mr. Lance. Thank you. Tom, if you have any questions throughout the process, please feel free to interject them. Okay, I will. Thank you. And I know there's some folks who are on a little bit of a time crunch zone, but I ask that we take some things out of order and start with Mrs. Sherman of the American Heritage River Commission, which is under activities and fees in your budget book. Good evening, Mrs. Sherman. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. But we all too, and thank you very much for coming, so I can make our sixes up meeting.
Happy to.
That one probably about three quarters of the way through. Four one four zero is the code.
Whenever you're ready, Barbara.
All right, so I don't know what you can see, but this is the first time in several years that the American Heritage River Commission has asked for an increase in our budget, a two percent increase, that basically it's eighty dollars more than what we've asked for previously. And the reason is, the bulk of our budget goes for the reagents that are used for testing for E. coli during the summer. E. coli testing is done in Summers, Enfield, and here in East Windsor. East Windsor has the most sites, eight to ten sites are tested between May and September. And in the past couple of years, we have been benefited because the professor who does the testing because of COVID, because of illness, was able to use the reagents that she would normally use during her teaching at University of St. Joseph and use them for testing here in East Windsor. Sad to say, she had some illness and COVID canceled some of those classes. The reagents have a very short shelf life, so rather than be wasted, we got the benefit. However, it is anticipated that she will be well and she will have enough volunteers that all of it can be done, and she has provided us with a cost estimate which is higher, it's twenty-six hundred dollars, higher than what we've normally been paying. And therefore, I'm assuming that two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five is going to be higher than that as well. So we've asked for a little bit more. There's also some items in our budget. We were asking for some more water testing probes and nitrate strips again for this water testing. She's hoping to get a couple more volunteers so that she doesn't have to do it all. She does produce a state of the scanic report. There's a copy, a paper copy at the Selecton's Office. It's also available as an e-file if you want me to send it to you. The biggest thing, this is what the E. coli report looks like for the summer months. And if you can see July, the red means the water's not advisable for any kind of recreation use, no swimming, no boating, don't let your animals in it. And because of that, we had to delay our cardboard boat race, and then in turn, we even moved the venue and we used it over at the Bres. So we feel very strongly that we keep going with the E. coli testing, and therefore, a proportion of our budget goes for all of that. The only other things we use the budget for is to have a portable sanitary facility with the New York State bike. And we subscribe to two outside agencies, Connecticut River Conservancy and the Rivers Alliance based out of Witchfield. They give us feedback as to what else is going on for the Connecticut River. That's basically our budget. And we hope that you will approve it as presented for forty-two hundred eighty dollars.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments for Barbara about the American Heritage River Commission?
Thank you for your attention.
Okay, let's return to the normal order here. Madam Assessor, good evening. How are you?
Just fine. Good evening. Let's see. Budget's pretty flat. There's not a lot of change, other than salaries, which everybody has to worry about. This year I don't have longevity, so that's a thousand dollars that's come off. The advertising has gone up a little bit. That's due to the JI or the new management. All the rates have gone up with that. Our books, maps, and manuals, we've gone up a little bit. This is due to the Department of Motor Vehicles. And the people that provide them with pricing for motor vehicles, their annual fee has gone up. We really don't know what's gonna happen. They may change the whole way we assess motor vehicles from October. They may postpone it enough. What was that?
Or eliminate it.
Or eliminate it. We just don't know what's gonna happen. But that's five hundred dollars at that. I requested probably substantially more on my education, which was brought down to be the same as it's been this year, so I don't have a problem with that. I have a new assistant assessor. She's taken most of her classes, but she does wanna do some refresher classes before she sits for the exam. She actually only has one class that she needs. And then she'll have the experience and other classes to sit for the exam. It's a difficult certification exam. Pass rate is about thirty percent for the first time papers, so I have a lot of confidence, but she, she doesn't have as much confidence in herself. Hopefully, she's gonna do it first time around, but that's about it.
Okay, how about assessment appeals?
What about? What would you like? Oh, the board of this. I'm sorry. My head is still on taking appointments for the assessment appeals. Tuesday is the deadline. Anyways, what did we do with them? We gave them a little extra money for dues and fees. That's basically education. We have two new members, two brand new members, and there are classes offered periodically, and I'd like to have a little bit of money in here if we can, if one of our new members would like to take a class. Advertising went up a little bit too, same as the assessment.
Questions or comments for Helen, either the Assessor's Department budget or the Board of Assessment? Keith, I have a question.
Actually, it's not, it's not related to your budget, which is, but since you're the assessor and you're standing here, I have
And I happen to be.
I'm, I'm gonna need some information later on, so I thought you, you can answer it or not, but can you just tell me the casino property, is that assessed at pre-demolition or post-demolition value? You know?
It's assessed at current market value as vacant commercial.
And I appreciate your budget presentation and the layout and the book.
I just wanna say that. Thank you. I'd like to have everything that.
Other questions or comments about Helen's budget for Helen?
I just have a quick question. If you look at worksheet, the included under dues and fees, it looks like you might have picked up a couple on the next page. So if I look at here, you got two at seventy dollars, the CAO, but then you got two at fifty dollars for two hundred, and this one is at one forty. What's the difference?
Okay, that's CAO, which is the Connecticut Association of Assessment Officers. Membership for myself and my new assistant. So that's the one forty, and I'm not sure where you're seeing the next page.
It's the, the cost to attend the meetings.
Okay, so then, yes, yeah, those are the two annual meetings that are held in the spring and the fall.
Of course, so these, the first section is the dues and the section, right, okay. Okay, I understand. It had me confused, so I should
We want, yeah, we, we want dues and fees along with education, so it's
Any other questions or comments for Helen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a dis- explanation of, don't you have a comment, Neil?
Thank you.
As long as there's no homework. Oh, you, Barbara?
You need this?
I'll be, I should be fine unless you guys have questions, and then I'll, I'll be fine.
We can share it, and then I'll take it back at the end.
Right, thank you. So with our budget, there wasn't too much of a change. I think the biggest change that I had was under dues and fees for three-day conference, which is at Amherst College. That, I think that was my biggest number. Salaries changed, but it was, it was just under the the contractual obligations. That was it. So that, the conference, it's three days. It's in Amherst. I was gonna go last year. I just and I was all set to go. I just didn't have time. We got really busy here, so hopefully time will let me go.
So, so, and I, I removed that when we discussed whether or not you'd be able to make it this year, and you said you didn't think you would, so I, I cut that out.
Okay, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, and we talked about your, your CTEs and where you were in the progression of that.
I, I'm already past them right now. So I, and I got till May of twenty twenty-five. So you're right, we did talk about that.
It just, is there a way to put, do you have like a spreadsheet with what you cut out of things and stuff that you could put up there or no, so we can, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So it was the the conference that we just discussed, and it was some, some supplies that he had purchased in the current year that didn't even be carried forward, jacket and the like. Right. Otherwise, it was, I put his budget forward as presented. Two oh one, two fifty. And again, true, true of all town departments, the budget presentation includes contractual increases for the clerical union. It does not include contractual increases for supervisors, dispatchers, police officers, because they're contract, so those are budgeted elsewhere pending negotiations.
You, I noticed you have the full adobe suite. That's in your budget?
That yeah, that's, we've been
Probably should be in the IT budget, not that it matters from a total bottom line, but
I, I don't have it. Angela has it, and that, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay. That's what we did with Field Boyer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, you, you do mention, you know, that your, your goals are to reduce inspection wait times. Do you, what's the average now? Do you have a handle on that?
Right now, we're probably, I, I can maintain between a week and two weeks. And this time of year is tough, so when somebody's called for concrete, I have to either come in early or go late. I have to slip move someplace or push something off that I can. I, I gotta get them done. So this time of year is tough, but I've been trying to average a week. I'm trying to keep everything down to a week. I, it's, it's not a science. There, you know, I, it's just about timing and just keeping efficient as, as we can. And that's the reason why we have that goal is to keep everything else efficient. You know, we can keep everything down. I can get things done within a week when we're really busy. So a week and a half, you know, I, I don't like to go more than that. Some things we can push off. People say you can, we can do it anytime you want, you know, and that's very helpful, and they're understanding, so, but I'm between a week and a week and a half. What's the goal? One week at all times. It's, I can promise you, it's never, it's not gonna happen all the time, but I wanna get it closer to that week time. It's, it's close as I can.
How, how about your plan review period? Where, where are you in terms of plan review?
I don't have it.
And that is a significant difference. So, I mean, we're, the turnaround time on that is like clockwork.
So I, that's, I get here a little early in the morning, just 'cause there's nobody else here, and it's really nice. It's quiet.
I do the same thing, yeah.
You, you know, not that I don't like y'all, it's just, it's quiet. And I get more done in that half hour, hours time. It's really nice, so I go through my schedule, and then I start on plan review. And then when Angela comes in, we go over the day, the week, whatever, and then I continue on plan review, and usually I'm done by noon time every day, you know, or one o'clock. I'll just work on it through my lunch. It's just, I like to, as they come in, they go out. Summertime, I might be a day or two out. I don't like to make anybody wait. You know, I'll have questions. I email them right away. Sometimes they don't get back to me. They don't see it, so then I, you know, what we do is either Heidi or Angela, then I'll have them call within a few days. You know, did you see this? Just so it doesn't get forgotten about. We can get it done, and it works.
And that is, that is a sea change in terms of our interactions with the public, so thank you for that, and to your staff, I know we're a big part of that as well.
Oh, sure.
I have another question. Is, yeah, okay. Um, so Ken, I, I commented a question. First, the comment is that your permitting system is really great, very robust and easy to use, so, and you, and I like the fact you can look up other permits. You can just do searches. So we can see the permits for commercial that are fully prepared. Yes, it's really great and useful. You put in here that you've been doing the inspection for the relevant solar. Just kinda curious, what kind of paths are you, what, what kind of paths are you inspecting when you, when you do it in the solar construction? What do you want to add?
Mainly, up until recent, it's been all the underground. So if there's thousands of miles of underground cables there, and they're just about done now. So I was every day I would track that. And now I don't have to, it's, it's getting where I don't have to go there every day now. So they're doing the last few trenches right now on Plantation Road. And then all the solar arrays are gonna start coming to Plantation Road. They were supposed to come today. They didn't show up today, so they should be there no later than Monday. And then those deliveries will keep on going, probably right through April. But there's a bunch right now already over on Windsorville. So those, they're gonna start setting those within a couple of weeks.
Those building code that you, that you monitor, that you're, that you're responsible for, obviously you talk about the electrical and, and the stuff in the ground. You, there's also code as to the, the structures, the metal framework into the panels, you know, all of that.
Yeah, we, you know, what we do is they'll put up a model for me. And I look at that model, and I'll say, well, I don't like this, I don't like that, and then they change it. And then their engineers will come up with different things. So one big one was they put all the metal together in the whole field. Everything was put together. So I go and look at it, and I go, we got a big problem, and where the screws came through, all these screws, there was four screws coming through, we'll call it a, a, where the uprights come. There's four screws coming through, and that channel was gonna be where all the wires ran. So I, I said, you need protection on all those screws. There's a million screws that they gotta protect.
And they're buried inside of a channel.
Yeah, they're, they're in that channel, so I, I said, we gotta do something here. And they, they got on it. Within a couple of weeks, they, they had the solution. They called me down. I said, perfect, and they did it. I mean, there, there's never a problem there. They're really good.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions and comments for the, for Ken or for the Building Department?
I would just like to say I have received a lot of feedback from your office from people trying to get permits and do work, and there's been nothing but positive comments on the customer service, so thank you for that.
Oh, sure. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. You're good.
Thank you.
Ms. Calabrese. Which of your seven budgets would you like to start?
So the planning department is requesting one two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. Seventy-nine and a half percent of that is salaries for free full-time employees. And that has gone up by twelve hundred dollars for the clerical position. Professional services makes up seventeen point nine percent of the salary, and that is largely to cover our planning and policy consultant, Mike Tomato from High Feet. And I also added two thousand five hundred dollars for professional services to help us with the plan of conservation and development revisions, as we'll be making mailings and having some printing done during that process. Advertising makes up one point one percent, and fees do supply and travel one point six percent of the budget. So I'm asking for a one point five percent increase. And that is four thousand two hundred dollars. And as I mentioned, the payroll going up, one thousand two hundred, professional services, two thousand five hundred. And then fees and dues is up about four hundred, and that is due to Causio. Both Danielle and I are gonna be in certifications, and then Katrina's gonna start her training. So that, but that has gone up. And Danielle and I are in the Conference of Municipalities, but let's see, CM program. And then we have six commissions. Their budgets are mainly flat, and they total thirteen thousand one hundred dollars, and that's recording secretaries and some fees and dues for training for the commissioners.
Just out of curiosity, on the sheet you just handed us, it said FOI requirements for advertising. Just curious, advertising was three thousand dollars last year's adopted budget. Have you gone over that this year because of FOI requests? I was just curious.
No.
Okay, really the FOI in that regard really is for legal notices.
Okay, so just meeting the requirement, it's not to respond to
Not extra. Thank you for that.
On that, the, the rates at which newspapers are, are charging has increased considerably.
Okay.
There's a, a more active push than usual in the legislature this year to have that requirement of newspaper advertising be lifted. I, I was in a meeting just this morning where it actually sounds like that is more plausible than it has been in the years past. In large part because these mom-and-pop newspapers like the JI have been bought up by corporate media, and, and so there's less appetite amongst legislators to support local because you're not. And in the, you know, we're a quarter of the way through the twenty-first century now. Everybody has a website, and, you know, the town's website ought to be the official portal instead of a newspaper like the Journal Inquirer that no longer even has circulation in East Windsor or a radio button on it for the town of East Windsor, so it's it's not really our paper of record anymore when it doesn't even recognize that we're in its catchment area.
Thank you.
So then, first of all, the comment is that I had an opportunity to watch you and your staff with all your planning zoning. That's my only real involvement in, in, in watching your department action, but it's been very helpful to see the support that you have for planning and zoning, and how you, having to lead them through their, their discussions and their work. I really appreciate that. That's really, really positive, because they need support, and having town staff employed required. But it's also, the way you do it is really positive. The only question I have is on the EDC. So the EDC is one of the part of the budget, and the EDC hasn't met And the EDC hasn't met for like two years. Is there a budgetary constraint or should we pull the money out of the budget or is there something that you have plans of?
We're constrained on volunteerism.
Right?
For the board, so we wouldn't wanna have uh. No budget, should we get volunteers and be able to hold some meetings.
Right?
Yeah.
So it sounds like you would like to have these commissions all be active.
Sure.
Alright, so it's just like, because I understand it's just a worse luck than having to make appointments today, um, to need to find people and get.
Folks need to be willing to volunteer.
So you'd like to keep the money in the budget?
I would.
Just in the event that it gets uh, restored as an active commission.
Yeah, as soon as we have enough. Uh, interest and we can hold meetings, we can set a calendar and. Be off and running.
Just, just so that you were aware, um, we, we've notified the um. That everybody can, many of the, many of the years, opening some working commissions to help with their people out there. I've mentioned it on several of my uh, agendas, um, for my VA's on reports that were looking for volunteers. Um. So if anybody knows anybody, um, that's looking to get on a working commission, the application is on the website, so they'll be able to fill it out and. Send it in to um, Melissa.
That's much, much appreciated, Ruth, thank you.
CVA and PZC too.
I, I see your, in your comments, you're continuing to work with permit link with building out new modules.
Yeah, it's been a bit of a struggle or slow stop and go with um. The folks over there. They um. Changed their approach as to how they're doing the actual coding. Um, they went down a path that we decided. It was becoming, it would be cumbersome on them and for updates. To forms and whatnot, so they're, they're retooling. To do a code where if we wanna add a field in a, uh, application form or we wanna change who's, who's doing what in the process. Then timeframes and reminders, we'll be able to do it. Ourselves. Uh, I have a meeting set up for next Wednesday. To get an update on where they are and get a firm timeframe from them. But it has been slow and disappointing.
Yeah, I understand, but I do, I do. Understand the direction they're headed to and that's a good direction, should they actually get with what.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be better for us in the long run.
Other questions or comments for Ruth? Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, Callie.
So. The majority of. My uh, increases. Is coming from, I'm, I'm requesting a part-time certification in my office. The reason for that is um. OPM. Requires that uh, the, in order to hold your certification, the um. Tax collector and, and. Maintain continuing education units and my assistant is also certified and she must have her continuing education units. In order to. Get those, we need to go to the seminars and classes and um. It has become a struggle for us to obtain these, I, I have mine, I've just completed mine. And um, I am also um. On the uh, state board. Of tax collectors as a secretary and so my uh, my duties require that I be at these conferences and. It is hard for Heidi to uh. Obtain me, because I keep leaving her behind, so she needs to be able to get out and we need some part-time coverage. We need to make sure that person who is collecting is collecting in a proper way, so um. I'm, I'm not asking for a, you know. Full-time person, I, I just need somebody to come in and cover for the time that we're leaving and so it's about. Twenty-five hundred dollars that I'm asking for someone to come in and. Cover for, for these times that we're gone. Um, they also have a slight increase in our vendor, QDS is asking. Yeah, I don't have a lot of choice in that, so it seemed to be the, the biggest vendor in the state. Um. And uh, of course, all the seminars, everything have gone up slightly, hotels, food, everything like that has gone up a little bit, so. Those are one of my, basically one of my increases. Have come from. In my budget.
Yeah, I have a question, how many hours do you anticipate for the new business? Is that for a short term? One year?
This is for a year, so for a year, I'm, I'm requesting about a hundred and twenty-nine hours in a year. At minimum wage. So it's about twenty, two thousand five hundred eighty dollars. For the whole year, so this, this person would be spread out on as needed basis. It's not, you know, a regular type of.
Good, the, the, the answer I'm asking that is because. If my mind serves me right, we had a shared. Position of any time between. Two and it wasn't working out, so it wound up going, I mean, to one. Area, um, is there any way that? There any free time anywhere where that could be covered by somebody already here?
We can talk about that for sure.
That, I think that was kind of thrown around, but we have to make sure that the person who is in another office is. Born available at the same time, there's no conflict between the two offices. You know, so that can certainly be discussed.
What kind of training does that person need?
Well, the, the training is so um. I would want them to go through probably the, the first two classes so that they understand the state statute that, that they're applying the, the payments correctly. So that, uh, if I have accounts out there for tax sale, that they understand that. They're not putting the town at risk by telling somebody something improper, so I would probably have them go through the first two classes. They don't need to be completely certified, but I would certainly want them to um, take the first two classes so they understand the state statutes and why we apply things to the uh. To the back taxes and, you know, understand and stuff.
What kind of commitment is that for them hours wise?
Uh, that is about eight weeks for each class, one night of, one night of a week.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not a, a large investment.
Twelve, fifteen hours per class.
Yeah. Even if they got through the first one. That would be. They could understand, they had to calculate interest manually, that would be.
Do you have to pay them to be in that class, do they get paid in that search?
Yes, yeah, you would. But I mean. Yeah, I wanna make sure that they are fully vested in doing. You know, not gonna go that, that's.
I have a little question about, um, just financial operations for a second, so I mean, a lot of payments come through the mail, right? Like banks send it into the mail and a lot of residents and businesses sending their checks to the mail agency. And then what's the next form, people coming in person? After the mail?
Uh, you have, uh, coming to the, uh, you have the credit cards and the debit, so your files drop that way. So you have mail, you have the Dropbox, you have the credit cards, you have people coming in.
How are the credit card? I know there's fees and setup differently, is that, is that heavily used or is that?
Yeah, it's becoming more and more, yeah.
It is.
Uh, and we're, actually we're having some towns that are actually paying for fees because people are. Using it more and more, they don't walk around with, you, you have people who don't even have a write a check anymore, that's where we, we're, we're coming. Right now.
And you know, when people come in and pay their taxes, are they mostly? I mean, your, your staff has to manage it, are most people pleasant or do you have a mix of people that are angry or?
Ninety-nine percent of them are, are pleasant, absolutely, yeah. Absolutely, you, you sometimes you may get somebody who might be, you know, a little cranky and you try and find out why and that's, that's. Why, and like, once they understand. What's transpiring, they're like, oh, now I get it, so. I mean, they, they're usually. It's such a small fraction of people who we, we need that.
So I just wanna comment on your, on your request for additional training, your department is customer facing, um, and. Has a high level of. Necessity to be ethical and to be responsible, um, you're, people that are handling large amounts of money.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a risk in the town if people are unethical or they're irresponsible or they don't, they make mistakes, so. I think having well-trained, well-positioned. Competent people in, in that department is really a necessity, and I think that's what you're asking for is to be able to get. Get your assistant trained and then you need coverage so that you'll be able to do that, is essentially what you're asking for.
Yes, and I wanna make sure that, you know. The monies of the town are secure.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
But I know, I, I mean, from other town, heard other towns where people have uh, departments have the checks under the cable and the bin and, you know. They play, right, and saying, yes, you know what I'm talking about, they place them in places. That aren't accounted for and the taxpayers get angry because their bills aren't being, I mean, their checks aren't being processed. But there's also a high risk that, that uh, there's gonna be problems with that money, so. Um.
Yeah.
You have a lot of respect for, for what you're doing in your department.
Thank you.
Typically, what are you collecting, like, like a hundred, a hundred plus percent, right, usually?
Almost there. Where house fires apart, I'm where the hundred percent.
I would just say that I think that our entire workforce is ethical and I'm, I'm pleased with the progress that we've made, not only in your department, but in all of your departments. Over the last number of years, um, I think that the comments that I get, people are very well served, so. Um, with that, you may leave.
Well, you don't wanna talk revenue.
Um, if you, uh, what, what do you have for revenue?
Well, my, my revenue is, it's. The only change I really made was I, I upped the motor vehicle stuffle. Because historically it's, it's been high, so I, I took a chance and I found it, everything else, that was pretty. I'm, I'm standing same, like, that's, that's the only reason why I, I found this up.
Still ninety-eight point percent of overall collection? Can I say that a revenue report on, estimate a revenue for next year or a revenue for, for a revenue date for this, this year?
No, that's yes.
Always, yeah. And do we have a revenue estimate for? For taxes? The total taxes that we paid to the town?
This is just, so the stuff like I, I do, because that's, that's a greedy one, rest really. And um, I, I estimate on that, I estimate on the interest in lanes, I estimate on prior year taxes. Um, and aircraft registrations. So.
The answer to your broader question, we can't know until the expenditure side of both the town and the Board of Ed. It's finished and we know what the state revenue picture is gonna be, so it's that. You, you're asking for the last piece of the puzzle before we get to all of the other pieces in place, that's typically done um, at the Board of Finance stage.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that, I, I, we're talking, discuss it when we get to the, back to the uh, revenue side tonight. But I don't believe it, I don't think there's a charter or some of the charters, that's. That's exactly opposite what the charter says, that we're supposed to be doing at the Board. Select me with regards to revenue. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna put it on you, you're not, you're not here to present that side of my.
No, no, I mean, I do some of it.
Right.
But um, that portion of it I do not, I don't have all the figures to.
Thank you.
You good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Amy Lam?
My budget is, I guess, pretty straightforward, there's not really much of a change from last year. Um, besides. Um, like other people, the clerical union. Contact increased. So that is in salaries and. Keeping asking for. Overall, five hundred and twenty dollars, so. Um. Like I said, everything else has stayed the same, uh, besides a little bit in. Um, professional services for uh, land record auditors. Um. And film stores. Uh, those tend to go up a little bit every year, um, depending what we do, um. Can't think off the top of my head, it was like fifty. Fifty-three cents a document, so um. Like every month we get audited, so uh, they go through everything that we enter in the system and they double check everything if there's. Um, things I think need fixed, I get a list at the end of the month and I go in and make those corrections, note them. Uh, keep them in the vault and. Uh, that's what, uh, I usually bring you once a year, Jason, to sign off on that, um, any changes that they find, uh. That need to be made or changed. Um, the only other. Uh, difference was in education and dues, um, just for the spring and fall conference, um, just because. Um, like our economy, everything has gone up a little bit, so the prices. Um. Of those would be going up. And I think that's about it for my. Budget, if you have any questions.
Do you foresee um, with the early voting, any extra work burden for your office that you haven't accounted for?
So, um. Not as of right now.
Okay.
Um. I would say. That would be mostly. On the registrars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have very high confidence in myself and my staff, um, even. You know, COVID, uh, through all the absentee ballots, I mean, we. Never really got behind, I mean, we had minimal help, um, from. You know, luckily, the two people that we got help from was Joanne and Karen, two former clerks, so. It was, it was nice having people that knew what they were doing, um, and trustworthy.
Right.
And um, you know, we use them very minimally for COVID when everybody was, you know, freaking out and. Um, we had an influx of ballots, so um, I really don't see any, any need for that. Um, I mean, the only thing for myself would. Um, if it comes to them wanting to put ballots in my vault, so um, in. In the plan, um, you know, the, the ballots have to be secure, uh, the registers have a alternate plan of where they're keeping. Um, ballots for right now, so um, as long as the Secretary of State is okay with that, then that's fine, um, if that were to change, then. Myself or my staff, somebody would have to be here at night to, to lock up the um, ballots, um. As of, we're gonna see how the presidential primary goes and um, you know, we don't really know until.
Right.
The turnout comes, I don't. I don't really see a huge.
Okay.
I don't think there's gonna be a ton of people coming out uh, to vote, I mean, we're still, I'm not seeing huge numbers for absentee ballots, so.
Okay.
Um. It's kind of a wait and see, so I'm hoping that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Other questions or comments?
Yes, just a comment, you know, I've been in your office. Number of times, very busy sometimes.
Yes.
And I just wanna say, when your staff are like. Busy bees, like making everybody happy, I mean, with a lot of stuff coming all at once. And, and that's important stuff, a lot of, all, everything coming into your office is important.
Yeah.
I wanna say, I appreciate the fact that everybody in your office is calm. People are. Patient, but there's a lot of activity there, I don't know if people realize how much, how much takes place in your office. What you're responsible for.
Thank you. I don't think people sometimes, you know, petty left, but um. We see a lot of money through our office too, people don't realize land transfers, um, not just money to the town, but we send. Money, checks, I mean, uh, to the state every month, so um. Same with her, you know, my staff, luckily I have a great staff that's, you know, very accountable and. Um. It's been a joy, so I'm happy, people are happy.
I just, I just, um, on the same line that Sarah's speaking, so you increased your part-time employee point four three. You got twenty-five extra election days coming up.
But it's. That's, that's not an increase, that's, she's, she's point four three time, you take her hours against the thirty-five.
She's fifteen hours a week, yeah, she's, she's only fifteen hours a week.
Oh, you're not increasing it?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misread that one then.
Yeah.
Apologies, sorry.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure you're not so intro, because I know. Besides what Keith is referring to on a regular hour, I know. Besides what Keith is referring to on a regular hour, I know what your office does on election days.
Yep.
Um, and the amount of time you guys spend, um, the day of election, the day after election with the registrars and the moderators. To make sure everything is prospered and not the tease and getting everything, you know, that needs to be done. Um, so over and above your normal work, you extend that courtesy, um. And sometimes I feel bad because she's doing it for not, um.
I like my job. I don't mind it at all. So.
It's very much appreciated. So over and above the normal stuff, just very strong now, who knows, well, what it deserves.
Thank you.
Long with everybody else that I already talked to personally.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
Amy.
Selectman's name.
Yeah, I'll, I'm gonna be here. So if there's opportunity not to keep you past, uh, seven, I'd, I'd take it.
All right. So on the treasurer's budget, I have lots of them. I'm gonna need the treasurer's, the board of finance, insurance and pension. So on the treasurer's budget. The increase in salary is gross my staff because I am out of contract. The increase in the part-time, anybody who's regular permanent part-time, um, got a two percent raise. Uh, overtime, I went up two point two percent based on the raise that they got in last year and this year for my full-time staff. My longevity is contractual, it's staying the same. Um, payroll services are going up three point seven percent. And that's based on, I think we're not gonna have enough even this year. Last year's actual was sixteen thousand two thirty-one. We're already at seventy-six hundred for this year, and that doesn't include W twos or ten ninety-five Cs. Um, so I don't think my budget of sixteen, seven seventy-five is gonna be enough. I'm going to seventeen four for next year. That includes any employee that works for WPCA, fire department or the town.
Do those outside entities pay us back for their portion?
They do not. Um, travel, I love the same. Supplies, we love the same. Dues and fees, I went up quite a bit. Um, it's the cost of, we now have two people with CCMOs. So we have classes we need to go on, memberships we need to belong to. Um, two of us are certified, me as a CPA and I need forty credits a year. And Gail as a CPFO, Certified Public Finance Officer, and she needs thirty credits a year. And the cost of those classes are just skyrocketing. So for us to all get our credits that we need. Um, the cost's just more. And that's it for my budget. Overall, it's a one point nine, but that is without my increase. That's the treasurer. Any questions on that one?
Right, uh, yeah. Uh, do you also do those, um, payroll for the water pollution control authority?
We do.
You do? We don't get nothing.
WPCA, yes. We get a, we get a sal, we get some kind of payment back. To us, it goes into the general fund, but it's not specifically, like, we don't bill them specifically for payroll services. Same with the fire department. We don't pay that. We don't bill them for payroll services either.
You're talking about the product.
The fee, yeah.
But they're part of, they're a town department.
They're a town department.
Yeah. So we pay for everybody's fees right now relating to payroll. And Broadwork has had a ton of increases. When they went to more staff.
Yeah.
Every day, more shifts, night coverage. We pay by the body. So the more people they need to cover their shifts, the more bodies we're paying for. Cause the town staff has been pretty steady. We have about the same number of people we had since six years ago when I started. There hasn't been a significant increase in staffing on our side.
How about Board of Finance?
Board of Finance. Um, let's see what we got for Board of Finance. I think there'll be four on me.
Yeah, there's thirds at the top.
Board of Finance are, well, we have three changes. Our audit is going up. Um, just shy of three thousand dollars, but that we did last year. We had a huge increase last year. We went from forty-five thousand to fifty-eight thousand five hundred. And we only had one firm, um, respond to our fee. And then our budget miler is going up by fifty dollars and that's because last year was a over a thousand and that's all I budgeted for this year. And, um, Jay cut the annual report, but we've only paid thirteen hundred dollars last year and this year we haven't paid it yet. So he cut it down to fifteen hundred, which should be enough to cover it. That's all I have on Board of Finance. It's going up three point seven percent, most of it being the audit. It's about twenty-four hundred dollars.
Is, is there an escalator in that contract or is that gonna be a fixed number for the next two years as well?
No, each year has a set number and it will be going up each of the years.
Okay.
But it is a set price. So we know the price. It's just not the same.
Any questions or comments for Amy on the Board of Finance?
Sharon's.
You're talking about, um, property insurance?
Yep. That's one hun, one zero zero five four one five seven. And I made no changes to either one.
We're going into year three of a three-year rate lock, right?
Yes, but I made no changes because we had enough room in last year's one seventy-eight number and our, um. Cyber did not go up as I thought it would. I increased the budget last year thinking cyber was gonna go up and cyber did not. It stayed at twenty thousand dollars. As far as I've been sharing.
One, like, poster to them.
So my numbers are a hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and five thousand for a total of one ninety-one five hundred and it's the same as it was first year.
I have a question about that. So the last, the twenty-three, twenty-four actual was one thirty-two nineteen.
That's only so far this year. We're still missing the quarter.
We have a projection for the whole year other than looking at the budget number, the actual.
Um, I adjusted end of the year, but we'll share it probably next week or the week after. So we'll have a number. So that's only what we've spent so far this year.
Right.
For every number that says current year actual.
Sounds like what you said about, it sounds like there may be. We have a contract going, you know, in case they have like three-year plan. It sounds like there might be some room in there, potentially.
Well, last year was a hundred and seventy-eight for the year.
Right.
So we're gonna be somewhere close to that this year. You're missing a whole quarter.
But even at one seventy-eight, the budget at the actual, the year one seventy-eight, instead of one hundred and fifty-five.
Well, we don't know what the, we're at the end of the rate block this year, right?
I think we're going into year three.
And it's up to three percent or up to five percent?
It's, it's up to five percent.
So it's not a flat. The rate lock isn't.
Just saying.
It's not zero.
I understand that if there's opportunities where we're expecting not to hit the, the, the current budget amount, then maybe we should be reducing the. The new budget by that amount. We can always pay for it if it goes up above it.
From where?
Well, we have money from somewhere else. But why would you budget that connection?
I'm not budgeting extra. I think the number that's in here is the number we need for next year. I'm not sure why you don't have all the employee benefits on here. All right. So pension, we have budgeted. Seven twenty-eight, which is a one point seven percent increase. And this is a case where we're not gonna need it all this year. So I did not budget. I budgeted my ten percent increase off of last year's number. So the number is only going up twelve thousand dollars instead of sixty-six thousand dollars.
What number is that?
It's an employee benefits.
It's at the very end.
You want a, a line item. It is one oh oh five, five thousand. Uh, I lost myself. Uh, five fifty-two, three thousand.
That's your question about that?
Sure.
So just the, when you're budgeting for the pension, that obviously includes the amount of money the town needs to put in with employees.
That's the only thing that, that includes is the part that the town has to pay towards each employee based off something we get from the actuary.
Is there a, is there a budget line item for pension to build up the pension plan or to add?
That includes both.
That's what I'm asking. So it includes both. Then that includes the pension amount that we pay, um, for existing employees. As to the part portion we have to contribute, maintain their individualized pensions. As well as contribution into the pension plan to make sure that the pension plan is solid.
It's all unpaid. So the actuaries tell us, you need this much for normal costs and this much for past service costs. So it's really about making up the past where we didn't pay nothing. So there's nothing future. It's only based on current employees, current service. That's it.
So I was at the pension meeting last week, or in the last week or so. And it's, it looked like the return on investments for the pension were like really huge last year.
No, the return on the stock market was huge last year.
Well, I thought they told, I thought they indicated that the return on the pension, our, our plan itself was like. I don't wanna quote a number, but it was really large.
Seventeen percent.
Seventeen percent.
Yeah.
You're on the, you're the chair of the pension. Yeah, so. Did the actuary adjust the amount of additional money we need to contribute to that?
Well, they smoothed all gains and all losses over five years. So you'll only see a slice.
Right.
Of that increase. And we don't change our assumptions based on one good year because the year before, we lost twenty-four percent.
So have we asked the actuaries to give us a number for this coming?
We don't have it yet. They haven't gotten that far yet.
But they will be giving us.
Yes, but sometimes after budget. So I have to do my best and guess it. One word during budget because a lot of times it doesn't come until after budget's all done.
Or if they completely adjust it.
We would.
Or more likely the Board of Finance by that point in time.
Would see it, depending on where.
They have, they have another one that I have behind us. So that gives them a little bit more flexibility with the same thing as state aid.
Right.
Um.
So the other thing we haven't talked about yet either is health insurance, same idea. Right now we got from the state, we originally got five to seven. Then we got three to five. We won't see a final number on that, maybe before you guys are done, but maybe not. Maybe at the Board of Finance level and then that adjustment would be made there prior to setting a tax rate.
Right.
I don't know if you wanna do any other employee benefits. I don't know why you only picked pension, but.
Um, we'll come back to those, uh, when we, when we notice them. Uh, but let's, uh, what, what can you tell us about revenues at this point in time?
Well, I can tell you, the only two things not done yet are the use of fund balance, which I don't get to decide at all. The Board of Finance decides that. And the tax, because until we know all the other revenue pieces, I do have a state plan in my head right now, but rumor has it that the legislator is fighting it. Because they don't like the numbers. So I do have an estimate. You guys, I presented that to you guys. I sent it out, emailed today and gave you hard copies tonight. But so that's in my budget right now as those numbers. Um, I do wanna caution you that that ECS number includes alliance money. That goes straight to the Board of Ed. The town does not see it. I incorrectly budgeted it. I think last year and, um, it left us a shortfall. Because it comes across as if it's our ECS money, but it's really not. It includes two pieces and a hundred and seventy-eight thousand belongs to the Board of Ed. We don't get that money. So the two pieces not in my budget right now are current year taxes. Because I don't know what the budget will be to be able to back into the mill rate, nor I do I have the use of fund balance yet because that is a Board of Finance decision.
Okay.
A couple of questions.
Sure.
So, um. So on the P Q O T money that you had on your list, I, I went and looked at the statute. That's, that's money in lieu of taxes. Do we, uh, waive taxes on the casino properties when we receive that one million fourteen thousand dollar?
No, so we normally only get fifteen thousand dollars from P Q O T.
Right.
The budget from the state gave us an extra two million dollars, one million current year, which we did not budget. And one million next year, in lieu of us not being able to develop that property. That's all that is for. So it's two, we got two one-time payments of one million dollars. So that has nothing to do with the P Q O T money we normally get. Normally that's fifteen thousand dollars and that's what we get every year.
I understand that. It's just the statute says that it's money in lieu of taxes. It's under a statute that says the P Q O T grant, specifically Town of East Windsor, is in lieu of taxes. I just wanna make sure if you know whether.
I have no idea whether they charge taxes on that property or not, that, that they're tribes.
Okay, I'll, I'll find out separately. I wanna ask a question about revenue, but first I just wanna clarify something I said earlier. I wouldn't be argumentative about it. But the charter at page thirty-four has a whole section on the town budget. It talks about preparation and submission of the proposed budget. Section B says specifically, honor before the date set by the guidelines of the board selection, the first selection. Shall submit the town budget into the board of selectmen. Said submission, submission shall include. An annual or current expense budget, which we have, and revenue and expense projections, which shall be the complete financial plan for the ensuing fiscal year. Consisting of the narrative or line items of budget. Now, the reason I'm asking for this is because. I know that the proposal was includes one point two million dollars of fund balance. That's at least in the budget proposal, plus one million dollars of P Q O T money. And so right now, we have insufficient tax revenue, according to the budget, at the amount of two point two million dollars. To meet our budget because we, if we have to go one point two in the fund balance and one, one million in P Q O T, that means we don't have revenue for those sources. So we're ready, we're ready looking at two point two million dollars of money from essentially the general fund balance. And so I'd also like to know how short are we gonna be, if at all, on the regular projected budget? And all that means is, and I, I can do the math myself. I'll just take last year's budget. And I'll increase it by the four, four and a half percent. I'll calculate that amount. I'll add it on and I'll, I do the math myself, but I don't wanna be putting numbers out there. Talking about the budget. Right now, this budget looks like it's upside down because we're short two point two million dollars of, of tax revenue.
I'm not sure why you think you're short.
Because we.
We got a million dollars extra in P Q O T in the budget. So that's a million dollars less that needs to come.
It's a, it's a, it's a million dollars of grant money to the Town of East Windsor.
That doesn't need to come from taxes now.
Which is, which is grant money to the town, which is, in my opinion, is fund balance. And we have one point two million of fund balance. That's not happening.
No, that's coming, that's coming as a state revenue. Look on your revenue sheet from the state. There's a million dollars from P Q O T on there.
It's.
It's not a grant. It's not fund balance.
I wanna disagree with you. The fact you put it on there as state revenue isn't true.
Put it on there. That's, that's the report that made from the state.
Okay, I don't mean to argue with you. I went and looked at the statute. The P Q O T, P Q O T money is, is money in lieu of taxes. It's specifically granted to the town by the legislator for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, those two years, a million and fourteen thousand dollars per year. It's not tax revenue. It's a grant from the Indians in casinos. It's not from the state. It's casino money. Now.
No, that is, that's not true.
Right, take that back. It's coming through the state from this, from P Q O T money. Take that back. The, the.
Oh, it's not.
It's, it's money that's coming through the state. It's P Q O T grant money. It's money that was received by the state from the casinos that is being allocated to the towns. That's, I don't wanna argue about it for a second. I'll, I'll come back when you want to talk about money.
I don't wanna.
We are two point two million dollars. Uh, we don't have tax revenue in the amount of two point two million dollars to pay for this budget. And I really would like to know, what is the tax revenue that we need to pay for this budget? Because how are we going to make a recommendation and improve a budget if we can't even tell the public this is gonna impact. Your, you potentially impact your taxes one way or the other. The board of selectmen is charged when coming up with the budget.
And we did, the expenditure design.
No, no, it says in this, in the charter that we're, we're, the first election is obligated to give us revenue projections.
And we have revenue estimates in all the departments.
Except we don't have any tax revenue, which is thirty-five million dollars. Why don't we have that? Did I ask you a question? Do you have it? You just haven't given it to us or you don't have it?
No, I don't have it because I don't know how much fund balance they're gonna use, right? So that's the other piece. If, if they choose not to use any fund balance, we need more tax dollars.
For the first.
Right? I don't have that number.
Right.
And I do not have what the mill rate they're gonna set is.
Okay, but the first election has told us that he is based, his budget relies on one point two million dollars of fund balance and one million dollars of P Q O T money. I know it's not, it's not, it's, it's not a difficult task, as I understand it, to calculate the tax revenue needed to pay for this budget. That's up here in the chart. We're supposed to be deciding whether we're gonna send this to the board.
We don't have the whole Board of Ed piece.
I don't need a Board of Ed to talk about.
I do for my tax revenue.
Not to talk about the town budget. All right. I guess I'm not gonna get the answer. I'm just gonna estimate it myself. We're two point two million dollars under. Um, excess spending over our tax revenue.
That's not true.
This is, I'm not aware you're laughing.
It's not true.
It is true.
It is not fund balance. It's state aid. So we actually have one million dollars more in state aid than we budgeted last year.
What are we doing two years when we don't have the tax revenue? Where are we gonna pay for that budget, those budget increases? How are we gonna pay for this?
So it is a state grants. The, the, the additional million dollars from the P Q O T fund for the current and the next fiscal years are state grant. We have, we have to budget that as state aid. We were required to do that. The only reason that we didn't do it in the current fiscal year is because the budget was already set. We were required to do that, the only reason that we didn't do it in the current fiscal year is because the budget was already set. Before the state was able to commit that funding to. Perfect, now, your, your point about. The, the, the Pequot funds, you know, not being part of, of state revenue is like saying ECS is not part of state revenue. Of course, we're going to get into that. Um, so you can't treat one as a budget offset and not treat the other as a budget offset.
Fair enough, could I ask you though, let's do, let's, let's assume exactly what you just said. We're getting the Pequot money, you propose one point two million dollars of fund balance, okay?
I recommend it.
Recommend it, based upon that, which is.
Which is the same thing we're doing this.
Which we're going to have workshops, we're supposed to be voting on this, this is our obligation on the charter. Why can't we get to estimated tax revenue this uh to the town that's needing to pay for this?
How much are we spending on the board of ed?
They have a budget, let's use their budget. They gave us a budget.
But we don't have any control over their budget at any point ever.
Okay, but let's calculate it based upon their budget. I'd like to know how much money we have to raise in taxes in order to be able to pay for this budget.
Because we, we're going to be putting a false number up there.
Why is it that's the problem?
Yeah, but.
True. The problem, you, you set a number out now, which is a preliminary number really, right? Because all the budgets are going to be adjusted when they get to more finance, right? So people are going to hang it out on that, right, right? And then be all confused with it later. Okay, but by the other side of this though, listen, these are public hearings or public workshops, they're to inform the public. I get what you're saying, okay, let's not put out a false number, okay? Want to make sure we inform the public correctly so they're not confused. Fair enough, but not giving them the information isn't, isn't the way to do it. The way to do it is to say, I'll be the first one to do this, okay? I'm not going to go out there saying, listen, you know, um, you know, uh, or making a false statement, okay? But, but I. I know I've, I've done budgets for, I'm elected, elected office, I don't want to keep saying this, but for like sixteen years I've done budgets. And every single budget I've ever done, they give you an estimate of tax revenue that's needed to be able to pay for your budget. That's what we get, and we should be having that, this, it's just, and I went to last year's budget, and I'll hand this out later, but I went to last year's budget. And I got, I got exactly what I'm asking for, it was provided last year in the budget.
At the board of finance.
At the board of finance.
What's the ticket?
Yes, at the board of finance.
So, so, so I'm going to calculate myself, I'll do my own math, and I'm going to calculate myself. And I'm going to form, I'm going, I'm going to talk about these meetings about what the number is. And if, if we can't get a number from the, from the treasurer, then so be it. That's fine with me, I'm going to, I'm going to calculate the number and do the math. I was hoping to get the number from the treasurer just for, what did that one say? So we have an accurate number that no one is saying, somebody pulled something out of the air. How much taxes does it, is it going to, do we need, revenue, tax revenue do we need to pay for this budget? There he is. How, if not informing the public about that before we, while we have workshops and, and vote on it, send it out, to me is, is, is contrary to our, our, what we're supposed to in the charter.
We haven't voted on any.
How am I going to vote? How could I possibly vote for a budget when I don't know how much the tax revenue was supposed to be to support that budget? The estimated budget, I have no idea how much taxes have to be raised, I have no idea of the impact on taxpayers. I have no idea when it, whether it is going to go ten percent increase or, or two percent increase. How could I, how could any of us possibly vote for a budget when we have no idea at all of the impact on taxes? That's all I'm saying, we have to have some idea of what we're going to send over to the board.
We will by the time we're done.
But we do, but we don't know.
Right.
We will by the time, we don't, because we don't know yet.
But we will know here.
And if you're going to, and if you're going to put out a number.
Right.
You're going to do what you're going to do.
Right.
But please, put out that number as Keith Yakaloff individually, not. My name or this board associated in any way.
Really, that's what I'm saying, the treasurer's job is to come up and tell us what the.
Well, whether she will or not.
Won't, she's just saying she won't.
She's not ready yet.
All she has to do, literally, our first budget workshop, and we're, and we're, and we're focusing right now on the expenses and how we got here, what the people need, right? Like, I get your point, but you're a little early in the process. Fair enough, but Alex. Get there. But it's, there was, there was a report tonight on revenue. And I contacted everybody today and I contacted the treasurer today saying, can I have this number? Because we reported revenue tonight. Forget it, that's fine, I don't, I don't want to say like it's not here, it's a big problem, I want to know if it's coming. That's all, so.
And she told you that it's coming.
No, she said it was coming after board of finance does all their stuff. I want it before I vote on the board of selectman budget, just like all of us should have it before we vote on the budget. How much tax increase are we going to?
And I want it when it's accurate, and if it's not accurate, coming out of the treasurer's office, I don't want it at all.
All right.
So, so Keith has asked his question relative to what Amy has presented on revenue, does anyone else have any questions or comments for the treasurer? On, on revenue side of things?
Not at this time.
Well, thank you for all you do and your staff. Thank you.
Okay.
I just, real quick, if you do get um. An updated budget that's been approved um. On the state, um, it was forward that, yeah.
I will tell you, the conversation that I had at CCM today is uh with legislative leaders from three of the core councils, the governor's budget and D O A. So those numbers, those are not, they're just.
In respect for the education cost sharing, because the conversation I had with Sam last night, um, those aren't anywhere close. To what the three towns issue every sentence again, we're supposed to be getting this, you know, going on. I used the word appeal due to lack of other choice, but it's all deal with them, it's, it's his, it's not what was.
I will say CCM is pretty good at letting us know when something gets fast. But sometimes it's not until after you guys are done.
So this here.
Sometimes it changes.
You guys are done the first week of March.
So I would caution anybody that has this tonight not to use it as casting concrete because it's not. Okay, so now we come to uh budgets under my control, which is the uh selectmen's office, activities and fees. Legal and the ethics commission. Um. Mine is structured, this, my, my department budget is structured the same way as every other department. Um, we have full-time salaries, we're anticipating um. A two percent increase for staff in that office. Professional salary consists of um basically info shred, um which does our, our document disposal. Um, there's a couple of uh reco printer charges that are in there. Professional services, um, again, is info shred. We have the cost of the reporting secretary for this, this board. Um, all leased equipment for town departments. Um, so if there is leased equipment at the annex, if there's leased equipment at public works. At any place, that, that is included in my department budget. Um, we have community outreach funds, which have been thinned a little bit over time. Um. And we have postage, postage is the general postage costs for um town hall departments. Um, inclusive of the tax collector. Um. And then what else do we have? Advertising budget, that's the same thing that um. We talked about that, was that Amy Lam? No, we're, um, talked about advertising costs, so anytime we need to do a public notice, um, we travel, we uh charge for that. Um, travel expense is my travel stipend plus conference participation. Supplies is office supplies relative to my office in particular. Um, general office, uh, general, for central supplies is for um supplies for the entire building. We have. Computer supplies, which is basically toner and, and cartridges. Um, computer supplies again, uh, and then dues and fees, which are our membership for um events. Sponsored by CCM, CROG, Karma. Um, those are the major, like CCMO again. Two of the three of us have CCMO, Jen is the third and she's working on hers now. Just cool. Any questions on my budget?
So the only thing that's not included in here would be those um. Contracts that haven't been.
No, nobody in that department is on a contract, no, no, so that, that's all true. Uh, activities and fees, a lot of these are per capita assessments, we've talked about these in the past. Um. Pulling it up so I can give you the rundown. Probate is per capita assessment. North Central Health District is a per capita assessment. Um, recognition is a line that we use, you know, anytime I do a presentation, like one of those commemorative plaques. Like for the, the folks who rescued somebody from the fire or um. When we have Joe Le, as an example, after his twenty years of service of planning and zoning, those, uh, that comes out of that line. Um, our CCM membership is in there as a, as a town, that number has been static for, I think, fourteen out of the last fifteen years. Um, and it will be again. Um, the CROG membership is in there. Memorial Day pays for flags um to go up on the, the brave sites of veterans. Metro Hartford Alliance is a membership, that's not a per capita thing, but it might be a per capita value, but. Um, that is just a standard charge to be a part of the Metro Hartford Alliance, which depending on the year has had value or not. Um, they've had some changes there and shifted their focus a little bit. Greater Hartford Transit District is a per capita assessment. The Cemetery Association is one of those areas that I highlighted where we might be able to support them. A bit more with an end of the year transfer rather than increasing their uh appropriation. They had asked to go from a budget of twenty-five thousand to fifty-two thousand. Uh, that was largely for uh tree, treescape maintenance and paving for their parking lots and roadways. Uh, I flat funded them at twenty-five thousand, uh, but I did commit to them that I would try and um. Ask for a transfer to cover those costs in the current year, just to check off that, those one-time expenditures, uh, without putting that into the budget. Um, we don't, no longer part, participate in C H R as a dues paying member because we get the same service through their state funding. Um, East Windsor Health and Wellness, that is um the successor to the Visiting Nurses Association. Four Town Fair, um, we're going from a thousand dollars in current year to five thousand next year, it's because it's our turn in the rotation to be the host community. Um, North Central, North Central Mental Health is another per capita assessment, it's a, it's a minimum, it's like. It's like eight cents per person. Um. The American Heritage River Commission we heard from earlier, we fund five hundred dollars for the Melrose Schools Memorial Day Ceremony. Um, and a new thing this year, um, that was a constituent request is funding for. Uh, a nonprofit organization called Your Community Cares, which serves as, uh, think of match dot com for. Um, people in the community who need certain assistance or services, elderly or infirmant who need certain services. With people who are willing to volunteer their time to do that. And the costs for, uh, that Your Community Cares is asking for covers the cost of the background check for the volunteer and for the, the service beneficiary. Um, their request was two thousand, I funded it at a thousand because it's the first time that, um, they've come forward to be included in a budget. Uh, I have checked with some colleagues of mine around the state who are. Currents um supporters of Your Community Cares and they've represented, their experience has been mixed. So I thought it best to start small, see how it works, and if, if it does, if it is something beneficial, we can.
Cool. We could email.
Yes. There, there are four months of distribution.
Right, yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that's the same group.
Yeah, same group, uh, my understanding is they have one full-time employee, um, she was in here, she met with Amy and I. Maybe a month ago, um, and we've met with her before, but she reexplained what their model is. Um. It's a nice thing to try, uh, you know, I mean, that, based on the feedback I've gotten from, from. Peers around the state, it, it really could go either way. Any questions on activities and fees?
So are you funding it, because this, is it not funding it? Did you change?
I changed it.
You changed it to a thousand?
Yep.
And what's your annual fee?
They don't have an annual fee, so it's, if, the way it works is if we contribute a thousand dollars and the background check is um. Uh, fifty dollars per person, then it would uh pay for ten volunteers and, and stakeholders to um enroll in the program. All they're, all they're asking municipalities to do, at least at this stage of the year, is cover the vastly background.
That's it, just the background. So then. This, this is nonprofit organization.
Yeah.
Has nothing to do with any of our audience, and not that it's a nonprofit, they were going to. Be due to and, you know, handle any problems there that come forward.
I think they're being, are they Manchester based?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
They have a state line, well, I mean, the colleagues that I were, was talking to were uh folks downstate who had a relationship with them. Um, so they, they have a footprint in communities all over Connecticut. I don't think very many, twenty twenty-five maybe, but um they're not geocentric in any of those.
No, but they're starting a big program in Manchester where they're actually going to have program space.
Yeah, they're using, Manchester's using Harvard dollars to provide to them.
And a lot of other places are using uh, the, like the um East Windsor Greater Together. Money, a lot of money from Hartford Foundation is where a lot of other towns are getting their funding for them.
And the same rate applies in those communities that are using those funds, is, um, you know, it simply covers the cost of the background.
They shut us off after the twenty people, like, that's the end of our money. We only give them a thousand bucks and they do ten participants and ten volunteers, then we're done. They won't let anybody else participate from East Windsor.
Because some of the emails, I find interesting, some of them, I think.
But I think, I think they're, um, they amplify the services, because what they're doing is background checks to allow. Other services to come in and provide services for East Windsor residents. So once they, once the people are cleared with the background checks according to the program. Then they can, they're eligible for all kinds of services from a variety of organizations. But they can't utilize those services until the local people get their background checks to make sure that they're, they're safe.
And they background check their clients and the service partner. Uh, so. It, it's not just the people who are driving cars or, or, you know, weeding the garden, which were a couple of the examples we really provided to us. It's, it's also the people who are inviting somebody else into their homes who, um. You want to make sure that nobody is being put in.
Yep.
Okay. Um, legal, um. I'm, I'm asking that the legal budget be increased slightly, um, in both the labor and the general council.
Right, because you are um.
Yeah, I went backwards. Um, so as I've talked about a number of times, we have three partner units that are out of contracts. I think three of them are going to be full-blown negotiations, so um, I, I think it's going to be costly. Um, and then I'm slightly increasing the town council. And then the ethics commission is flat funded.
Definitely, and that's one of the very first pages. Right behind first law. And nothing's been spent so far this year.
Good. All right, with that, it's six fifty-nine, um, so if we could have. Is there public participation on the budget presentations?
Is there a question whether somebody wants to? Or are you asking whether it's allowed?
Uh, I, I understand the, the uh question there, it is allowed, I'm asking if there is any public participation.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Paul Anderson, you and I manage. Um. Yeah. I'm very concerned about information getting out that's immature. Budget process, this is a budget process, very few understand the simplicity of it, but it's step by step. You can't get to the end unless you do the steps in order. So, when the town, regardless of all the workshops, that's a lot of detail. But when the board of finance finally gets to a final budget. That's when you find out, okay, what income do we have that we know about? Which you won't find out the law is when the state doesn't do that, but that's the way it goes. And. And then you have. An amount of money that has to be collected, or quickly collected from taxes. Then you go to the grand list and divide it out to come up with a mill rate. The mill rate is the last item, not the first, not the middle, it's the last, there is no other way to do it, that's a budget. You cannot positively tax people until you know how much money you need to raise. You don't know how much until you have a budget with a number. And it's all. Everybody's numbers all wrapped up into the one number. We need thirty-seven million dollars, forty-five million dollars, whatever it is. We've got this coming, that coming, blah, 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 how much is left, we got to get that from the people who pay tax. That's the process, you can't change it, it is the process, it will happen. So trying to come up with a tax rate today is insanity. You're never going to be. You're never going to be able to get that, that just is a mess, and we've done that in your place, it's a disaster. So, that's. What I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Is there anyone online who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen on the budget workshop? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
For a second?
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and all in favor of return, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven oh two.